Good evening, and welcome to the December 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Just some warning here, those doors are not open. Front door is not open. In case of a fire, you've got to go out this way, or out the door you came in. And I don't know when the construction will be done, so I can't give you any hints on that, but welcome anyway. We have no minutes for approval. Let us stand and do this pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some old business to take care of quickly. Woods 2312Z, 8 Albertson Street in Hyde Park. This is an area variance to change the side yard setback from the required 15 feet to five feet to rebuild a covered porch. The public hearing was closed at last time, and therefore, the board is prepared to move on this. We have a resolution. Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Would you read the resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution to grant an area variance, Thomas Woods, 8 Albertson Street, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, December 21st, 2003, Resolution Number 23-12Z. Whereas the applicant, Gary Ubeck, Jr., of Z3 Consultants, on behalf of owner Thomas Woods, has submitted an application for an area variance to construct a porch on the entrance and side of the house. That property located at 8 Albertson Street, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number 606520828200, in the neighborhood core zoning district. And whereas the project is depicted with measurements and a survey prepared by Larry L. Lynn LS dated June 15th, 2023, and whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108, 5 dot 15, to permit a side yard setback of five feet where 15 feet is required. And whereas pursuant to section NYCRR 617 dot 5C17, the granting of an area variance for single-family, two-family, or three-family residents is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the act. And now therefore be resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108, dash, 33 dot 6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The site contains a single-family dwelling. The variance would allow the reconstruction of a front porch that wraps around the side of the house. The original porch was pre-existing, non-conforming structure because it was partially built within the side yard setback. The original porch fell into disrepair and was removed, thereby losing its pre-existing, non-conforming status. The new porch will be built using the same footprint as the original porch, but it will be further set back from the side yard property line. Moreover, the deck will add an aesthetic appeal to the dwelling as well as allowing the owner to enjoy the property. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The variance is necessary because the proposed structure will be less than 15 feet from the neighboring property. The applicant would like to rebuild the porch in the same footprint style as the original structure. The applicant is seeking an area variance because they will be unable to make these changes without a variance. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 15 to five feet with a decrease of 66 percent. Any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Decreasing the side yard setback requirement to allow a variance of five feet so a porch can be built will not have a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. The replacement of the porch will not impact the visual environment since the porch already existed in the same spot on the property. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions: Payment of all fees and escrow pursuant to section 108, dash, 33, dot 5, F1. The authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance; otherwise, it is revoked.
It has been moved by Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second for this resolution?
Second.
And may I just say that I'd like to thank the applicant for the compromise that they gave us.
Yes, we appreciate that very much. Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations, sir. We look forward to having tea on your porch.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good. Thank you, happy holiday.
Thank you for coming.
The next bit of continuing business is the, okay, got that, got that, is the Enclave at Hyde Park, 1703Z. This is a sixth extension for the 2017 variance, Resolution 1703Z. The public hearing for this variance was closed on the last meeting, November 16th, and the board is scheduled to vote on this variance request at tonight's meeting. Mr. Agarwal, would you read that resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution to grant area, to re-grant area variance is the Enclave at Hyde Park, Green Street, at Long Branch Road, Kipson, New York, 12601. Date today, Resolution 17-03Z-6. Whereas on March 22nd, 2017, by Resolution 17-03Z, the applicant, 54 Hyde LLC, was granted a variance to change the average density in the Greenbelt District from 2.5 acres per dwelling unit to 1.41 acres per dwelling unit, the variance, in order to re-subdivide 70.51 acres into 25 residential lots with 50 dwelling units, the project. And whereas pursuant to section 108, dash, 33, point 5, F1 of the Town of Hyde Park zoning law, any variance which, under which the authorized activity has not commenced within one year from the date of issuance is revoked without further hearing or action of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas pursuant to section 108, dash, 33, point 5, F2 of the zoning law, the Zoning Board of Appeals may, in its discretion after conducting a public hearing, grant an extension of two of variance. And whereas on March 28th, 2018, after duly noticed public hearing thereon, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a one-year extension of approval for the variance. Whereas, 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 whereas be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants a one-year extension of time in which to commence the activity authorized under the variance to December 21st, 2024. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension subject to the following conditions: One, applicant shall provide a letter stating that the project, the status of the project and whether need for a further extension is anticipated to the Zoning Board of Appeals on or before June 21st, 2024, which is six months from the date of this extension. Two, payment of all fees and escrow. Three, pursuant to section 108, dash, 33, point 5, F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance; otherwise, it is revoked.
Thank you, Mr. Agarwal. Mr. Agarwal has moved this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
A reluctant yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a happy holiday.
Good, and we're looking forward to seeing the project move ahead.
Us, too.
Thank you. We'll now continue with public hearings, Duncan, 2314Z. They are asking for a variance changing the letter height on the wall sign from the maximum permitted 14 inches to 18 inches, and to change the letter height on two monument signs from the maximum permit of 11 to 14 to comply with revised corporate rebranding standards. I would move that we open and continue the public hearing for Duncan. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Any, any new concerns or any new information? Are you changing? Have you decided to change the font?
No, no updates since our last meeting.
None, okay. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to make comments on the signage? Okay, then I would move...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The Duncan in Red Hook on Broadway, you know that one?
I'm not familiar, no.
Yeah, because they're, they're pretty modern and new, and they have a sign with lettering. I was curious if your lettering was similar to that. So you don't, you're not familiar with it.
Unfortunately, I'm not. I mean, is it, do they have just the word Duncan?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so I would assume...
And I went there and stood up on the monument, and I measured the letters myself, and they were 13 and a half inches, so we're pretty close to what you're doing.
Yeah, we're 14.
I was curious if you were familiar. Okay.
I was also, I also saw that sign, and it's, it reminded me of a donut in a coffee. It was soft and not sharp. That was my personal observation. Anyway...
Well, they, they are trying to soften the sign a little bit. The font is slightly different than what you guys are used to. It's thinner, it's a little cleaner looking.
It is.
Yeah, so our font will match that.
And it's quite noticeable.
Great.
All right. I just have a question.
Yes.
This isn't the first time that we have made concessions for corporate rebranding, right? Is that to be something that we will continue to do, or, I mean, we have a sign code. That's what it's here for, is the sign code. Shouldn't they be willing to follow that more closely?
Good question.
If I could respond, I understand we do not meet the letter of the law of the sign code. I think our structure, our building in Hyde Park does meet the intent of what your town is trying to do. We fit with inside the town. I think our signs are much smaller than most Dunkins. We don't do a lit sign per your code. It's all carved lettering that's lit per code. And again, what we would be allowed to write, and the size of sign that we would actually be allowed by code to put on that building is much larger than what we're putting. The only thing we're asking for is a little larger lettering. And I, and I know I've said that before, but I think it's an important thing to note. I mean...
Sign, lettering.
Right. So it's, it's, and the surface face of what we're proposing is smaller than what's there today, and I think we've all driven past it. You're all familiar with the site. Do you feel the sign is overbearing now? Because it's going to be smaller than that.
I don't even notice it. The problem I have is the traffic flow.
Oh, and I don't disagree. Unfortunately, it's a very busy store, and that, that is an issue, but it's a postage stamp site, and that's not what's in front of us tonight.
Any comments? Any other, any other comments?
No.
Okay, then I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Perkins, I think you have a resolution.
Yep. Resolution to grant two area variances, Duncan, I guess we could even change the name here, 3979 Albany Post Road. Whereas the applicant, Maury Architects, on behalf of the owners, Chen Realty, have submitted an application for two area variances to alter existing signage, lettering configuration, the project, at property located at 3979 Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified tax parcel number 6064, dash, 04, dash, 967222 in the Corridor Business Zoning District. The site to accommodate and comply with corporate rebranding requirements. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267, dash, B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108, dash, 33, dash, 6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Proposed signs are similar to overall scale of the existing signs which were previously approved by the board in 2011. The new colors of the lettering are slightly more muted, rounded.
Rounded.
Less neon, which will bring the signs more in line with the aesthetic requirements of the town. Further, there are several existing signs located in the neighborhood shopping center which are of similar size and of which similar distance from Route 9. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variance. In order to comply with corporate rebranding requirements, the applicant must replace the existing signage. Due to the building's unique and town-specific aesthetics, it is not immediately identifiable as a Duncan franchise to the individuals unfamiliar with the location of the area. As such, the increased leather, letter height is necessary to maintain the visual impacts of the signs once they are altered to the more streamlined signage. The requested variance are numerically substantial. The proposed wall sign letter height increase is 28 percent larger than the 14-inch maximum height approved by the planning board. The proposed monument sign height increase is 36 percent larger than the 11-inch maximum height approved by the planning board. However, the revisions to the sign include the elimination of the coffee logo, which result in overall reduction in the sign areas. The requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. Because the sign locations already exist, no physical or environmental impacts shall occur as a result of granting the variances. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions: Improved traffic flow. No. I can't do that. I want to do that. Pursuant to section 108, dash, 33, point 5, F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance; otherwise, it is revoked. Payment of all fees and escrow.
Mr. Perkins has moved this. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes.
Thank you.
We look forward to Duncan.
Absolutely. We'll be down for a little bit while we do the interior, too, but we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're going to close it?
Temporary.
Temporary, okay.
You're going to set up a cart in the parking lot?
We're going to try to actually keep the drive-through open while we do some of the internal, too, so you still have your call. I appreciate it. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, thanks. The next item is Arietta 2220Z, dash, two. This is the extension of the 2022 variance, Resolution 22, dash, 20Z, to change the rear setback from 50 to 15, and change the side setback from 25 to 15, and change impervious coverage from the maximum 15 to 20 percent to build a new single-family residence. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
The last, last month, we discussed the continuation of the variance, and I believe you and your neighbor to the west were going to have a discussion about some other things not related to the variance.
Correct.
And how did that conversation go?
It happened.
Was there, was there an agreement or an understanding reached?
I don't know the answer to that. So first of all, Chris Marta, 28 LC Kingston, on behalf of Ms. Arietta, owner of 609 Salt Point.
Did we open the public hearing?
I make a motion we open the public hearing.
We'll do that. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now you're official, sir.
Okay, so after the last zoning board meeting, I had a conversation with the property owner at 607. We exchanged contact information. I received an email from them five days later. Two weeks after that, we scheduled a meeting on-site, which was December 9th at 2:00 PM. I arrived at 1:57. I met with Ms. Coppola. By 2, by 40 minutes later, we were done, and I asked her for permission to leave. I did so. Mr. Neal, and I'm sorry, I mispronounced your last name, Seidel.
What is it?
Seidel. Unfortunately, never made it to the meeting. Didn't reach out, didn't cancel or anything like that. So I got a very disturbing email subsequent to that, which I responded to. The topic of conversation with Ms. Coppola covered her concerns with storm water, obviously flowing down the hill, and how to manage that, some of the history on the site with the, with the demolition, the backfill, the silt that sort of overflowed onto her property. She also talked about the importance for her to have some privacy guarantees when it comes to the sighting of the new house in relationship to her bedroom, so we walked through that. She had some misconceptions as to where the house was located, didn't understand that it was completely centrally located within the site plan, so it wasn't, you know, left justified towards her property, which was a concern. She talked about some smells in her basement due to wetness, and I think that's most of it. I went ahead and prepared packages for the board to review, which includes the timeline, copies of all of our communications, and my response to every single one of the concerns in question. I also had a follow-up meeting with the building department. I met with Dawn for two hours, had a pre-submission review of our proposed package, just to understand if there was anything else that I needed to be concerned with. I canvassed and reached out to all of the neighbors on Salt Point and on Haight, H- Haight Avenue, to get kind of a sense of where everybody stood, see if there were other concerns from other neighbors that perhaps needed to be taken into consideration. I got an awful lot of what I'm going to call irrelevant information and gossip and so on, which has nothing to do with anything. I did ask everybody who was willing to sign a petition in support of our application. That petition is also in this package. And I am also in the process of preparing a sediment and erosion control permit application to submit to make sure that all of these matters are addressed and taken care of. I did a comparative analysis on Parcel Viewer, and looked at the limiting distances existing between 607 and 609, as well as 607 and 605, to address the idea of limiting distances between living spaces.
What did you find on that?
I find that, you know, the disadvantage we have is that the original house was set so far back on the property that the front elevation really was in line with the rear addition of 607. So there's a primary house, and there's an addition. So the alignment was such that from what I understand to be the primary bedroom on the second floor, if she looked out the window towards our property, there was nothing but an empty lot and the 611 beyond that. So the original distance was 20, let me just pull up my number so I don't... I also, by the way, went to the, did a site visit on Monday, this past Monday, which was on the heels of the recent storm that brought all of that deluge of water, to see if there was any current storm water overflow. Took pictures of all that. That's all in here as well.
Was there anything unusual from that storm?
The unusual thing, I think, is something that's shared by all the properties having frontage on Salt Point. A lot of water just sort of sits there. I think there's a conversation to be had with the town about how to mitigate that, but, you know, all those properties are also at the bottom of the hill, and water has a tendency to flow downhill, and it hits Salt Point and doesn't really have anywhere to go, so it does tend to gather there.
Is there no, is there no public drainage there on that road?
None that I saw, certainly not in front of 607 or 609, which are the two that I looked at specifically. I didn't venture further at 605 or 611, but...
Okay. Was the drainage or the water runoff about the same for a number of houses along there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in, in response to the setbacks, so where the original, our original property was located, or structure, we only had about two and a half foot setback between our wall and the property line. So the overall distance was about 21 foot six between 607 and the old property on 609. With, with the new 15-foot setback, we'll be increasing that from 21 foot six to 37 feet, and that's for the ground and second floor. The third floor, which is set back towards 611, will add, which is also the primary, will add another nine foot of distance, increasing that to 46. And when I look at the distance between 607 and 605, it measures as 31 feet. So we're ameliorating or increasing the distances from 31 to either 37 or 46.
From, okay.
All right. And the 21 six, as I said, I think what worked in her...
Would you mind repeating those numbers? Just go back a little bit and repeat those again.
I can give you a copy.
Okay.
Can I bring those up now?
What you're not changing, though, is the same requirement for the setbacks that we approved for the variance. Is there any improvement in the setbacks from, from what we gave as a variance? A reduction? Is it back out? Same thing? Okay.
Although I did find a new driveway interior, which can give me the option to...
To decrease the perviousness? That would be great.
I know. Okay. I think that was, yeah, the concerns about the sewage system, you know, they wanted to make sure that what we're going to be filing is code compliant. Obviously, that will be the case, you know, we, the existing system is failing. We have, we know that it's, we've had it inspected. It's completely faulty. We have a septic engineer working on designing a new system, which will be obviously code compliant and overseen by all...
Is there septic fuel in the front?
Yeah, we're redoing all of it.
But the, okay, the current system is in the front, and you will redo that in the front?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the current, where the current septic tank is, is actually too close to the well. And we had, you know, proposed moving it forward, so that'll get it compliant with a minimum requirement between its tank and...
Where is the well relative to the, is it in the front of, of the structure?
No, it's between 607 and, between 609 and 611.
Okay, so it's on the side.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like the complication with this lot is that there is another lot behind it, fairly close compared to the others.
Right.
Okay. We've taken that into consideration. Go ahead. Okay.
side of the property between 609 and 607, to further mitigate any sort of...
Some burn indicator, some burner or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're going to prepare a storm water report or some kind of a thing for us?
Yes.
So the board would just consider the matter of the setbacks. Any improvements on the property would be subject to other departments in the town.
Okay. We're still just going with the continuing of the variance.
Right. Right. So you want me to submit the storm water report?
But it is going to be done.
Yeah. I mean, you know, in the conversation with Dawn, you know, unfortunately for us, we're building a brand-new house. And so we are subject to all of the latest and greatest applicable codes with all of the energy calcs and all of it. So it's going to be quite a process just to get all of that in order, but first meeting went well. Nice guy.
Other questions of the board?
I have a couple of questions. So Mr. Marta, you're not the one that's doing the demolition or the work on the property, or you're just doing... You're just the architect?
Correct.
All right. So I was there a couple of times this past weekend and right after our last month's meeting. And I saw a lot of looks... Looked like vehicles and just equipment, like storage equipment, that wouldn't be really related to whatever type of construction on the property. So what's going on with that?
I can find out. I mean, I know that that equipment belongs to the owner of the property. I don't know what their long-term plans are in terms of...
You're going to think that's a part of the construction at this point? Or the demolition?
Not... No, not anymore.
Does it belong to the owner of the property or the person that's doing the work on the property?
The owner's doing the work.
It's the owner?
It's the owner.
It's the owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I did mention to them that, you know, a commercial vehicle, which I think is what you're referring to, that big, big landscape truck thing?
I didn't see a truck. I saw a trailer. I saw a car, just a car sitting there. And I saw lots of, like, looked like long landscape equipment.
Right. Well, her partner is a landscaper.
Okay.
So I think he's...
Sounds like it's the owner's equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments or observations at this point?
Um, no.
Okay. Any other individuals for public comment? Yes, sir. Pick the mic up there, please, and identify yourself again, sir.
Hi, I'm Neil Seidel. I was a resident, and I believe this is a public...
Hearing.
It's open to the public, right? You don't have to be a resident of the lot next door. I'm an advocate for the environment, for humanity. The zoning board, the zoning laws are put in place for a reason. This lot does not conform. Hold them to the zoning setbacks. It's environmentally not possible. There's a septic system that's less than 50 feet from the well. They don't have enough room to support this residence that they're building. And as a matter of fact, I didn't even know there's a three-story. I thought it was only two-story. Anyway, I just... I think that, you know, the zoning laws are set in place for a reason, and I think this is one time to exercise that right, because this lot does not conform. They bought this lot at a way sub-price, thinking they hit a home run, and they're trying to jam it down everybody's throat, and it's not... I don't believe it's fair. That's all I can say. Hold them to the zoning setbacks. If you want to build a house, no problem. 12 by 20, whatever fits on there, do it. They can't get a septic in there, they can't get a well in there. I wouldn't doubt that the well is not contaminated with E. coli or bacteria because of the septic that's 50 feet above it. It's just... It's a farce. It is. I'm sorry. But I put my faith in the zoning board and the powers that be, and then if it passes here and they get their variances, well, then I'll go to the health department, we'll move on.
Just to be clear, they were already granted the variances, this is just an extension request.
Okay. So...
And you understand that the house...
So we've already given them the right to just build whatever they want, whether it's environmentally friendly or humanitarian.
Actually...
Actually, no. The requirements now are much more stringent.
Because I thought that the permit expired.
The requirements today for septic and for wells are much more stringent than they were when this house was built. And the house that they're building is no larger than what was there before. In fact, maybe even smaller.
That's fine, but it's... Now it's new construction. They demolished the existing structure, now it's new construction. They're held to the... It should be... The septic system should be 200 feet above the well. There's no way it'd have to be on the neighbor's lot across the street.
Any comments, sir, on that?
As I said before, we are building a brand-new house. We will have to comply with the updated codes and have every intention of complying with all such matters and all such codes.
And that would be the building department, the health department, the planning board...
Well, first, yeah. You've got to give the owner health approval before you can even do anything. But I'm just... I'm just trying to stop it, not only for us, but for them, too. I mean, they're going to put four kids in the house with a... Anyway. E. coli. I've designed septic for 10 years. I know all about it. I know that that lot will not conform, and if you give them a variance and you grant them the right to build, then the health department's going to feel obligated to give them a variance, because now they have a variance to build a house. It's just going to snowball. And as a matter of fact, first of all, how can you... He doesn't even know what the existing conditions are before he can speak to... Oh, was there any adverse? He doesn't even know what they were before the project. He's only been there a couple of times. Secondly, we make mention about the vehicles, they all get moved against the fence. They got moved, you know? It's... Right now, it's a storage... It's right now, it's a storage lot. I get the whole deal. The guy bought the lot at a discount price, he's looking to get a home run, and you know what? A three-story house. Three-story house. Ours is only two. I mean, isn't there a height regulation candidate, like, from the road or something?
Yes, there is. There's a maximum of 35 feet.
35 feet. Right? I just... I just feel like this is being jammed down our throat. You know what? It's not fair. We bought our house, we're stuck with what we got, we're stuck with our confinements, we built what we have, and then we're going to let them just come in and do whatever. And by the way, you know, still, there's been nothing done about the...
Sit down?
Placement of fill in the right-of-way of the county road.
Excuse me, sir. So what would make you happy, then?
What would make me happy? Put a trailer on the lot.
Sell it to him so he can...
Yeah, exactly. What would make me happy? Sell it to me for $20,000, like I asked the guy before I even started. It's true. I mean, it's a non-conforming lot. It really is. But you know what? Go down the road. He said... I asked... I was late, there was a miscommunication, I was 15 minutes late, and I thought that I was thinking to myself, I've been in this situation. If the one guy who's trying to bust my chops is late, I'm going to sit there for 45 minutes and wait for...
Wait a minute. That discussion really is not relevant to what we're talking about.
Okay, all right. So I'm finished. Thank you. I appreciate your...
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Right. Yeah. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Since we just got this tonight...
Yes.
I haven't read it, and I'm not going to attempt to in the next five minutes. I propose to table the resolution vote until next month. I personally would like to do a site visit. I've never been there, and I would like time to kind of read this. So I think we should wait one more month till I can at least see the site and read this properly. I can't read this right now.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion. Solve it till next month.
Sure. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Carry? What we'd like to do is probably arrange a time when we can come out there at convenience of you and us and just walk through the site again.
Sure.
I think we still want to make clear that still before this board is a renewal of the variance that was granted last year. And under that variance, the size of the house, et cetera, was agreed to. The setbacks were set, and the design of the house was evident to us. So I think, looking at some of those, and you mentioned the perviousness, a possibility of... That was one of the variances. A possibility of improving that percentage of perviousness or imperviousness, or less pervious, whatever. And...
I think it's impervious.
If any, on your pleasure. I think that would clarify us all, but I think before this board, it's clear that the decision is, do we continue the variance which we granted last year?
Correct.
And there would have to be, I think, we're looking for if there's any other information for it, and I think a site visit would help us clarify it.
Sure.
Go on, get you moving forward.
Sure. Happy to do that. Also, point of correction, it'll be two children, not four. I think that was one of the misconceptions that Ms. Coppola noted when we met. And again, correction, I waited until 2:40 and departed with the permission of Ms. Coppola after we specifically discussed whether or not I should wait around for Mr. Seidel. So...
Well, it's clear you've made efforts to have the discussion.
Yeah. And, you know, the sooner you want to schedule that, the better. Obviously, everybody's schedules gets kind of crazy in the new year.
Work with Secretary, Ms. Halsner?
Sure.
Hoping and...
And we'll be there.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Did you want me to mark anything on the property, like location of the proposed structure or any of those kinds of things?
That'd be perfect.
So...
Yes.
Just for the record, the public hearing will be continued to next month.
Okay. Sometimes we close it and then vote next month, but we're continuing the public hearing and voting next month.
Correct.
Okay. And that's what that motion was?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
I would also like to clarify that that is a county DPW road, not a town-maintained road.
Okay. Okay, so the county is responsible for any of the drainage of that road? Okay.
It's not the town.
Not the town. Okay. Good.
All in favor, say aye. You're going to do that part.
Okay. So we have before us a resolution to continue the very... Continue the meeting until January...
Okay, sir, continue.
What's this? January what?
I believe it's 25th.
Oh, no.
Yeah, the next meeting is January 25th. It's the fourth Wednesday. It was only November and December that they're the third Thursday because of the holidays.
Can we do it in February?
If you want to adjourn it to February, you can.
I do, because January 25th is my planning board meeting. I'm on the planning board for the town of Asopis, and we had to move our planning board due to Martin Luther King to the 25th.
I've never heard of moving a planning board or a zoning board meeting.
Yeah, and it literally just happened via email like two days ago is the only reason it's stuck in my head.
We can make it February. That will give us a little more time to have a site visit.
February would be better.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion now? We have a motion now to continue the public hearing until February, and that would be February?
I would have to look up the date.
Okay. Fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday.
The fourth Wednesday of February. Are there four Wednesdays in February?
I don't like that.
It's just short.
Is there a fourth Wednesday in February?
There is.
28.
28th.
February 28th.
Yep. Okay.
And it's leap year.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will we be notified? Can we be present?
Yes, you can.
Absolutely. It's still an open hearing.
Would you leave contact information with the secretary, please?
It's... It will be on the website. Continued public hearings are listed on our town website.
The site visit.
Site visit. The board should go in staggered visits to go visit. It won't be appearing as a quorum, and any comments that you have to the board should be made at a public hearing like tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for the discussion.
Yes, of course.
Okay. That is... Okay. We have one bit of business. The next bit of business, Gold Tangling, 2302Z, 7 Beck Road. We have a comment from our council on this.
Yes, this was an application that appeared before the board, but they decided to pursue a subdivision, and they are currently proceeding before the planning board. They have not finished up there. They will be back before this board when they wrap that up.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action on this at this point?
We do not. We... When we referred them to the planning board, we held open the public hearing until tonight or as soon as the matter may come to be heard.
Okay.
And so it's still open, stays open.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next order of business, we will start on new public hearings. Paldino, 2302Z, 11 Spyglass Lane, Stotzberg. They're seeking a variance to allow impervious coverage from 16.29 to 15 percent, where 15 percent is permitted for the installation of two ground-mounted solar arrays. Good evening.
Good evening.
And let me first move that we have a... Make a motion for a public hearing?
Motion.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Good evening, and your name is?
Courtney, I'm from Empire Solar.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the project.
I mean, you pretty much summed it up for me. We want to install two ground-mounted solar arrays. I know that the allowed impervious coverage is 15%. He's currently at 14.33%, which will bring us up to 16.29% with the ground-mounted solar arrays.
Okay, I was, you have, it's an acre, 1.57 acres, which is about 65,000 square feet. So you've got perviousness of the driveway of the house. Is the pool behind also considered pervious?
Yes.
It is?
Impervious, yes.
Okay, so that collectively.
Is 14.
But we're looking at 15% of 65,000 roughly is about 10,000 feet almost.
Sure.
So you're short about 2,000 feet. Tell us about the installation of the solar itself, how you install it, and what's underneath it. My understanding is that the solar array is starting at about 2.5 feet above ground, and then goes to a height of seven in terms of the panels themselves.
So they actually go up to 12 feet in the back.
Goes up to 12 feet, okay, all right.
Which is why we intend on planting trees on each side of the yard.
Right, you have, you have the large trees on either side. Stick with just the site where the panels are itself, underneath the panels, that's pervious ground, is it not? It's ground, it's not cement, other than the posts that you're, you're.
Correct.
Constructing it on.
Yes.
So, okay, and I know that the town considers pervious because the panels themselves, is that?
The town law considers them impervious. Whether there's water running underneath them, and it's able to infiltrate or not.
Okay.
The town considers them impervious.
Okay, are you making arrangements for handling water running off of the panels around there?
No, so they're actually going to be on a hill, so all the water is going to be running down to the bottom of the hill.
Which way is that, toward the house?
The hill? If you go into the backyard, it goes down.
Oh, so it's going down toward nine?
No. I don't think Route 9 is behind there.
Is there a farm down there?
It's going, it's going west, right, the hill's going down west?
Yes.
So that's toward nine?
Okay. I mean, the hill already exists, so.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned in terms of, how are you going to handle the water? I don't know, it's a great deal of water, but how are you going to handle the water runoff from the panels?
I mean, there's no extra water that's going to be going down that hill, just because the panels get installed. Regardless, the water runs down that hill no matter what. If anything, it's going to collect some of it and move it down slower.
How is it going to collect it?
Well, I mean, the panels, they're, they may be completely flat, but there's ridges in them.
Well, they're at an angle.
Correct.
So from 12 feet to 2 feet.
Well, they're going to be at an angle facing south, not west.
They're going to, they're going to be slanted south, oh, toward the sun?
Correct.
Okay. I guess my only concern here is your preparation of the, when the water comes off the panels, it's going to be coming off accelerated, it's not a lot of water, we're not talking about big things, but if you treat that ground around there with some type of retention, whether it's stone or something else, you're able to absorb it better in terms of just protecting the runoff.
So you're proposing some type of, like a, like a stone, not, I wouldn't put a wall up.
No, not a wall, no.
Gravel.
Gravel.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, absolutely.
You've solved the problem.
I can make it look pretty, do we need a permit for that?
Okay.
I have a question about reflection, I've been curious right along. Do you take into consideration where the reflections go during, you know, the movement of the sun, so I mean, like people that are.
The panels are coated with anti-glare coating.
Okay.
So they won't affect anyone.
Okay. Other questions? New questions? No questions. Okay, you got anyone?
Nope.
Anything from them? Okay. Anybody from the public here to comment? Nope? Okay, then I would. Ask for motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, opposed? Okay, we do have a resolution, and I get to read it. Now, council, I'd like to add some wording in terms of the conditions, that there is gravel treatment or something.
Base.
Okay.
At the base?
At the base of each of the panels?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I get to you, I'll, okay. Resolution to grant an area variance, Frank Paldino, 11 Spyglass Lane, Stotzburg. Resolution 2320Z, whereas the applicant Frank Paldino has submitted an application for an area variance for an increase in pervious coverage to install a 1,283.3 square foot ground-mounted solar array system at property located at 11 Spyglass Lane, Stotzburg 12580, identified as tax parcel 616803469114 in the neighborhood district site, and whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Solar Panel Installation, Paldino Residence, prepared by Empire Solar, dated September 19, 2023. Whereas the applicant seeks an area variance for zoning law section 10843 to, 8, 4.3G2, to permit an increase in, to permit an increase of pervious coverage from 15% to 16.29% or an additional 1,283.3 square feet. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board appeal makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-336B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. 10 green, Greek giant trees will be planted to screen the mounted panels from neighboring properties. The panels are located behind the house and out of view from the street, and the panels will have an anti-glare coating. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The number of panels needed by the applicant and the existing orientation of the house will not permit an adequate space or sun exposure on the roof of the house. Requested variance is numerically substantial. The requested variance will allow the percentage of pervious space on the lot to go from 15% required maximum allowed to 16.29% or 1,283.3 square feet additional. Requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Also, the solar panels are considered impervious. It is noted that they will be installed between 2.6 feet and 12 feet above the ground. Wildlife will not be impeded by the structures, and the materials will be installed underneath the panels. Other than the mounting pipes will be pervious, hence gravel. The difficulties are self-created, however, the selected site for the solar panels is the only location available on the property, considering that the house roof surface will not work. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, installation of the panels must include management of the sheet flow of precipitation runoff from the panels. I think that's. Second, payment of all fees and escrow. Three, pursuant to section 108-335F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise this variance is revoked. I have moved this, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes.
Congratulations, quick, quick question.
Yes.
How much electric from this panel array will they get to the house, enough to?
We're hoping to bring their bill down to below $200 a month.
Below $200?
Yes.
What is it now?
It's around $1,000.
Oh. Jesus.
It must be heating the pool.
You guys need some solar?
Wow.
Yeah, most of our clients are pretty up there.
Yeah, that's really up there, I mean, they must be heating the pool year-round.
Yeah, I didn't ask if he heats the pool, to be honest, but he does, he does have an electric car, so.
It's only, it's only, it's only 3,400 square foot house, only.
Central Hudson's really expensive. I rent and I don't pay electric, but I've seen my landlord's bill, and it's.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wow.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
Good luck with that, thank you.
Okay, we have a new application, Spice Handler and Brown, 23-16. This is a area variance to change the required minimum frontage on a street from 25 to 0 feet, in consideration of the right-of-way to the subject parcels, permit installation of a standby electric generator. Good evening.
Hi.
Tell us about this.
Well, we're an island in the middle of Winnicke. And we have a long driveway that goes up from Van Wert. Head of the driveway is paved, it's quite accessible. UPS and other big trucks come up easily. We got the attorney's letter. I don't know, I don't, we tried to get this service called the Central Powers to put in a standby generator, because we had last year a tree fall, tear a hole in the roof, and incurred mold damage, and I'd like this never to happen again. It was, we were seven months unable to be in the home. Though we don't live there full-time, it is a place we enjoy in the summer, and we were unable to access it because of remediation of the mold situation.
Okay, so you need, you need a generator.
I need a generator real bad.
There's a, I think there's another issue here, is there?
So I did write a letter that you have, Ms. Brown.
Appreciate it.
I, I reviewed, because in the application, it stated that you had an easement across the Winnicke Land Trust property. I did review your deed, as well as the Winnicke Land Trust conservation easement. It appears that there is no easement for your property. The status of the driveway is an encroachment onto the Winnicke Land Trust property. They do permit it to remain.
It's an acknowledged encroachment?
It is an acknowledged encroachment. I did note in my letter that in the Winnicke Land Trust easement agreement, they stated that they could transfer, convey that property that is the driveway to you, if you would choose to pursue that. It would give you frontage onto Van Wert, onto Van Wert Place. You would have a legal access then across the drive. Right now, they're allowing it to remain there, but they do not have to do that in the future. So that was my suggestion, just because it is a significant variance. It is, the town code requires 25 feet of frontage on a road. They do not have any frontage as of right now.
So that needs to be resolved before?
Well, so the board could consider the variance as it has been applied for. It is a significant variance, and it could set a precedent for similarly situated properties in the town, but that is, of course, your right to pursue the variance as applied for.
But a precedent would have to be, my thought is, a precedent would have to reflect exactly the situation, right?
Well, a landlocked property.
Yeah. I mean, are there others?
I do not know, I do not know.
There are.
There are others in town, not necessarily associated with Winnicke, but there are other landlocked properties in town.
What does the fire department think about your?
I have no idea. Are they invited to check it out, and I think that would be the next step? Should you advance this, no?
In, in other applications for variances, the fire department now requires a 12-foot-wide driveway gravelled. And what I saw, what I thought I saw in the easement language was 10 feet. So I'm kind of not sure, and, and what that has to do with and why there is the 280A requirement is that the town needs to assure emergency services to be able to access. If Winnicke should choose to close that access, there's no access, if there's an emergency, you can't get there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, okay. I think, I think we need to set a public hearing for next month on this. We clearly need some more information and, and to clarify for you what needs to be done.
Right, I welcome you to check it out, and the fire department as well. It's a historic building.
It's a nice-looking building.
It's really cute little place, and I adore it.
Yeah.
And we're great stewards of the property, and we love, we love the park, you know, it's amazing.
It was part of Rogers Estate?
It was, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it may, it may help your application to get in touch with the fire department, and if you can get a letter from them.
That's something I must do?
Yes. And if you could get them to state whether or not the driveway is suitable or sufficient for emergency access.
And who, who would I?
Who would they, who would they contact, Ted or Kathleen?
I'm going to guess it's the Hyde Park Fire Department, and I believe that's Ray Davis.
Say again?
Ray Davis.
Ray Davis?
Hyde Park Fire Department, wasn't he? Rock and Roll Guy?
Yeah, just call the fire, Hyde Park Fire Department.
You can even just stop.
Don't tell them there's a fire yet, but just call them.
There's usually someone there, you could stop and ask and get the specific.
On the way out.
Fire chief, I don't know what the name of the fire chief is.
What I would, I'd like to present a motion to hold a public hearing next month.
Motion.
February, or January 20?
25th.
25th? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll, we'll continue this and set a public hearing for next month. I think if you are able to meet with the fire department and talk to them, that would be a great help. And I think what, what our council is indicated to in terms of clarifying the access. And we, we need to get you a generator.
Yeah, thanks. The other thing is that I have advanced your letter to Winnicke, to their land person. And they don't meet until early February, but I am going to pursue some sort of legal language so that it's clear in future.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, my treat.
And we'll see you next month.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Have a good holiday.
Have a great holiday and good New Year.
Thank you.
See you then.
The final, will everybody come up to the table, please? We have NCR CIA Hotel and Villas, 23-19, seeking three area variances. And we welcome you tonight to discuss these, and we can set some public hearings in the future. Good, it's good to see you back.
Good to be back.
Has anybody bought a house yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
But.
Has anybody come to your trailer?
We just got approval last night.
Well, I just.
Is the trailer there?
We, we thank you for your, your effort. We were, we had our site plan for the trailer approved last night by the planning board.
Okay, good.
And we couldn't do it until you all acted, so thank you very much.
Okay.
We also, just to bring you up to speed, we had our part two yesterday with the planning board on SECRE, and hoping that, and I believe they intend to make a determination on SECRE's lead agency at their next meeting of January 3rd.
Okay.
So thus, by the time you hold your public hearing on this, they will have taken SECRE and you'll.
And will have some information on their SECRE.
You'll, you'll SECRE and hopefully permitted, and will consider acting at that meeting.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm very interested in, in what they're going to see. But I'm very interested in each of these variances, which are getting into the property.
Let me walk, walk you through them, good?
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Okay. You have a, I think you have a, this diagram in front of you, but we'll put it up just to help. Okay, so let's start with what we're calling variance one, the orange, the orange one.
So. Let me get, let me get to your picture. You have it? You got it?
So this is a, the orange is approximately 5,000 square feet, 5,989 square feet. It's a setback variance of 36, the variance would be approximately 36 feet for the pool and spa.
Is the orange in that picture?
It's the orange in that picture, correct.
And that is the spa, or is there?
That's the, that's the pool, the pool. The pool and the deck, I'm sorry.
And how much is the day pass for the pool?
A dollar, no. Today, it's a dollar, tomorrow, it might not be that. The, just, you had also in your packet in the application, the National Park Service and the FDR has consented to that setback, and has consented to the visual that there's no encroachment, visual encroachment on that.
Help, yeah, help, help me out here, you're, is that the property line that you're looking for?
That's the property line.
The red.
The red.
The red, okay.
So, so you've got, so it's 100-foot setback, we're 36 feet in, and you can see the buffer between, you know, ourselves, and there's no development of FDR in here. So the FDR has, the National Park Service has provided a consent sent to the visual that there would be no impacts from the entire project in your, in your package. The second variance, variance two, as discussed, is the 864. This little green in the corner of 18 parking spaces. That's a, that's an 864 square foot variance, where 23 feet, that little green, into the 150-foot setback from Route 9. Everybody see that?
Wait a minute, okay, wait a minute, oh, we're down here.
Oh, way down here.
Right, see where the arrow is? It just follow here, follow the arrow.
Okay. And what is going there?
That's 18 parking spaces.
Why?
We need parking. We're not...we...this is all the parking for the resort. All the villas have their own parking, and we have to provide X amount, 96, 96 plus 18, to satisfy all this parking. We're not allowed to park on any of this parcel. We originally had some parking in here. We have wetlands, Winnickey, pre-contact areas. We have absolutely no other area.
The reason there's an...
We have the corridors, stream corridors that 100 feet we stay at, have to stay at for the most part. So we really have no...so you've got this little 860-foot completely buffered.
And the reason we have to use that, like, be in the encroachment is because it's a hill there. So that's the flattest part of the hill that we can actually build into. So it creates the least amount of disturbance.
No tree ward, tree cutting.
So this is parking...who parks here?
This will be parking for the resort. This will be parking for...
For the resort that's much further to the west.
Up here. It's all ballet parking. All our parking, all our parking for the quote-unquote...the whole thing's a resort. These are all the rental, the rental cabins, the 18 rental rooms, the restaurant, the spa, the treehouses in here, the wellness center. These are all will be parked in here and here. I mean, squeezing parking here. We have the deck parking of 96 here. We have 18 that satisfies that. We also have an event barn where we have to park off-site 86 spaces on the campus. And this is all because all of these are non-disturbance areas. Everything you're looking at 100 feet here, here wetland, here contact, Winnickey, scenic Hudson, we're creating non-disturbance zones all along here within 150, even the lot owners cannot even use this. And then we've got 100-foot buffer along in here, and we have some wetlands also in here. We have also pre-contact down here, and we're not allowed anywhere over here except the access road.
Your entrance to this is on the north end, right?
Right. It's the only...
Is there space there?
No. No, we...
Who owns that? Does the CIA own that restaurant?
That's Coco's.
Yeah, right. Do they own that?
The CIA owns that.
What about...I mean, that's been inactive for seven years.
Yeah, we...
Maybe more than that.
We talked to them, the planning board, about using that. It just was not viable, and we...
For parking?
For anything. For anything.
It's a nice one, Al.
And they don't want parking, and the town doesn't want parking right on Route 9. They don't want surface parking lots.
What's this then?
Right on Route 9.
That's the parking they're looking for.
Yeah, this...respectfully, won't be seen, buffer, won't have...just won't have an impact. It avoids cutting trees. It's flat, and this will be completely vegetated and buffered. So it's really, you know, respectfully, a minimum, if any, at 864 square feet. It's like two spaces. So the third...the third variances are really two parts. You have this very...these are both temporary grading. No permanent, no structures, no...this is grading for the walkway and the bridge, you know, the new bridge.
Is that part of the variance?
That is the variance.
That is the variance. Okay, we visited the...
It's a grading variance, temporary, and that...
Is this temp...
It's re-vegetated.
It's temporary?
Temporary.
While we build the...while we build the bridge, the new bridge that'll cross...
Right.
We need that variance in order to do the grading and build the foundations for that bridge.
And that gets completely, completely re-vegetated with its shrubs and ground cover and the like. And then you've got a small one at the emergency road, same thing, because we have to rebuild the emergency road, and that's a re-grading, temporary, temporary.
Is that the road open?
No.
Re-vegetated trees, the whole bit.
So that's a temporary variance or timed...
Correct.
What are we talking about, a year?
To build? I'm sure it's not going to be more than a year to build, right?
You guys can probably build that in three months, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can build as fast as we can. Believe me, we're not going to spread out because we want to have a long variance.
We do know that we'll be replacing that very short, very quickly, because we are only going to disturb five acres at a time. So we will be working in different areas at a time. So that is...the area at the entrance will be one of the first areas we have to build, and that'll be back to normal and replanted right away and stabilized. And then we will be moving over to the bridge area second for building the temporary variance. Of course, that'll get stabilized.
The road will remain there that you have there?
That road is actually there now.
It's an existing road. It just has to be upgraded for emergency.
That's a...
That's an existing road.
It's dirt.
For the access.
I'm not sure. I might want to...
We work, you know, we know this...we know how this point feels, and we work very hard...
How do we feel?
Pretty much stay out of the corridor, the stream corridors.
Yes.
Okay.
So your first one would be here?
Correct.
This is your initial road for construction, huh?
No. No, no. That's an emergency access.
Road for construction, and then where you're going to redo the intersection, proceed to DOT, and then eventually concrete here first, and then build this.
This is your construction road?
That's a construction road. The emergency access road will be...all the utilities will come up that road, so electrical, gas, all go in that roadway into the site.
So it means gas, but...
To connect to you, just to connect the CDs.
All right. So this is your first one. This is one. This is one. This is one.
Permanent. Temporary.
Permanent.
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 Green. Just...
Only... This is the only permanent one.
And this.
Okay, and this...what's this one?
Permanent.
Okay, what is it?
Well, that's the...
That's the permanent.
That's the 864 square feet.
Okay, 864. This is the one. Okay. Now, this is...you're getting a variance here because it's close to the...
Correct. It's a 150-foot buffer along Route 9.
There's this whole thing here.
As our only encroachment in the property. Where my cursor sits is the property line. Now, if you offset that 150 feet, you see that this clears it, and it just clips...it just clips this area. I thought we did a pretty nice job. It's the only place we approach and the 550-foot buffer along Route 9. I thought we did pretty good.
And that's temporary?
No, it's not. It's a temporary.
There's only one permanent.
Nope. So this is going to be temporary while they widen the road. This is going to be...yes.
And that's not a...that's not a...not a building. That's not a building, but more importantly, it's not in the stream corridor.
Well, let's do this. This is permanent or temporary?
Yes, so the rent's permanent.
All right, what number is that? Which one is that?
It's far enough back from this.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that this one? This is number one?
Yes.
It's an honor. Setback from the property. And the property neighbor is...
Do you know what they all are?
Uh, yeah. Here, if you want to...
So this is number one.
Trail. That's an existing trail.
One here.
Right, so that's going to be the permanent. This is going to be the temporary grading.
That's four. This is number four, temporary.
Yeah, there's several temporary grading.
And that's one, two, three, and four.
These are rented at 65% times. All these will be maintained by the same entity.
This is four.
Us will maintain this part, and this is...
And then this one is...
100% daily action.
This is number two.
This is 65%.
Any Irish events in this week?
Yes, events.
This is 3A.
And parking.
And that is temporary.
Yes.
And this is 3A. This is AMB?
Yep.
Parking. It's all...
It's all... Can you show that still?
So this is 3A, and 3B is...
Grandmother license. A lot of grandmothers with a dual.
And there's one more temporary, and that's four.
Yes.
Are you guys cleared?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought, you know, for a site that is so constrained and has so many setbacks and protected non-disturbance areas alike, respectfully, I think we did pretty good.
Yeah. Okay. Then what I'd like to do is set a public hearing for January 20. Is that too soon?
No, no, we want.
[Laughter]
Yeah, right now. And it's very important for us because you'll meet the 25th. We hope...we hope that you'll consider making a determination at the public hearing. I suspect there won't be many people speaking. And then we have planning board meetings right after that. When we...SEQA will be done with the planning board, we'll be talking with them at that point, conditional site plan approval. We're very close.
What, you anticipate...you anticipating they're approving the SEQA?
January 3rd.
So we should get a copy of that?
You'll get a copy of that. As soon as it's ready, you'll get it.
Okay, all right. Is there...of these four, is there any one...okay, give me the...do you have an order?
One, 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 one. No, I mean, I'm not being facetious. There's nowhere else...I mean...
Well, no, if you...the first one to get your construction going.
Oh, you mean Whitehill's stock construction?
Yeah, it'll be that one.
It's this one right here.
Yep.
Here, and...
Then the bridge.
And then here.
So the...
Those other ones will be...
The entrance off of nine, and then the bridge?
Yep.
Are the first two in terms of priority for construction?
Construction will be three, because phase one will be the infrastructure site.
Okay.
But obviously, we need all...
No, I understand. Okay. Then we have...
You have to have a motion.
We have a motion to set a public hearing for January 25, 2024. I would move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Have a great holidays.
Thank you very much, you too.
Everyone. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
It's good to see all of you.
Thank you.
Before...go ahead.
I'll leave it.
You're done.
All right, thanks. Thanks.
Before we adjourn, I personally would like to extend my appreciation for all the work of the ZBA board members here, my colleagues this year. A special note to our wonderful board secretary.
Thank you.
Kathleen Hoppe. And of course, great appreciation for our zoning administrator, Ms. Moss. We cannot do this without either of you, as well as our council, and we really appreciate Also, let's see, whatever else. Well, I would be remiss...
Merry Christmas.
I guess...oh, one other thing. I would be remiss if I did not thank the citizens of Hyde Park for their participation, their patience, and their understanding, and we very much appreciate that. We are here for them, and we look forward to continue in the next year.
Thank you.
Therefore...
Dave, excuse me. I'm sorry. Before we adjourn, I wanted to do a motion to refer it to the county per the municipal law, 239M. This project...
I make a motion to refer to the county according to that.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
There being no other business before the board, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. All in favor? Aye opposed? Okay.
Do you have...I'm sorry. Do you have to file with the county?
We have to file...
We're going to refer to the county. Yep.
Yeah.
That we disauthorize it.
Oh, thank you.